I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order, and if I could ask you to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you would indulge me, I would like to ask Representative Jeanne Lauer to come forward. We have a special presentation that we would like to make, and it's not on the agenda because it was a surprise. So Mr. Commissioner Haney, would you please come down front with me, please?
That was...
I got the look. That was not... That's his normal look.
We didn't let you know. It's complaining because we did tally.
Oh, am I turning around?
Yeah.
Oh. Geez. Well, it is truly, truly my privilege and honor to be here today for a very special gentleman, a very special citizen, a very special giver back to the community, and a very special friend. And it is very, very appropriate that we do this during the month of November because of Veterans Day, where we appreciate all of those who have served and have, as you have served, and have taken care of us and given us the freedoms that we have, and also because it's Thanksgiving. And there are plenty, plenty things to be thankful for.
That's true.
Okay? And so with that, I have a resolution for you from the House of Representatives. And it says, "With special pleasure that the members of the Missouri House of Representatives pause to acknowledge momentous occasion in the life of an outstanding individual who has dedicated himself to the success of the nation's armed forces. Whereas Joe Haney participated in an honored flight to Washington DC on October 17th, 2018, to observe the war memorial that was created to honor him as well as his fellow comrades who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas Joe Haney distinguished himself by serving his country as a member of the United States Army, who was stationed in Aberdeen Proving Ground in Maryland and Fort Still, Oklahoma, from 1957 to 1963. And whereas Joe Haney has been blessed with the love and support of a wonderful family, whose members include his late wife Donna and your two children Kevin and Lori Owens." Kevin is here with his beautiful wife. Surprise! Whereas it is fitting and proper that the Missouri House of Representatives should pause in its diverse daily activities in order to recognize such outstanding United States Army veterans such as Joe Haney. Therefore, it is resolved that we, members of the House of Representatives, 99th General Assembly, join in extending our most hearted congratulations to you at this propounded moment of well-deserved distinction. Congratulations. Yeah, might as well stay there.
This is like the engagement photo.
Would you like your family up there, too?
Jeanne, can I steal a moment? Joe, welcome home.
Oh.
Well done. On behalf of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 317, I want to give you one of our 40-year anniversary coins to commemorate your service. God bless you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. You have friends and relatives here who would like to say hello. They probably want a group photo with you. Pat, Cindy, hey, family, why don't you guys?
I'm not your family. I'm not family.
But you can't take the picture while you're standing up there.
Oh, no, it's going to happen.
I can take it for you.
There we go. Got it.
We'll send you some. You have her take down the mic. Congratulations.
One more, Jeanne, and Lynn. What? Here, I'll take the mic. Go ahead. You go ahead. Okay, one more. Got it.
And would you take one for me for Rainbow Center?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good job, boys and girls. Nice to be seen, better than being viewed. Been doing too many of those lately.
He wants the microphone back. I don't know who has it.
Okay.
He wants the microphone back.
Thank you, everyone. I was enacted in the military, in the Army, on Veterans Day, November the 11th. I won't say what year, but that was a few years ago. And it was also my late mother's birthday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the Commission for allowing us this time.
All right.
Thank you.
Very much. And I would like to thank our applicant for being so patient with this. It doesn't happen very often, so... Okay, now, Commissioner, are you going to make it back up here? I'm so... He said, "You didn't let me know." I said, "No." So, we've got to keep secrets once in a while on something special like that. Okay, on our agenda this evening, back to business, we have the consent agenda. Item two is the site plan design review, title wave, preliminary plat for title wave, the final plat for title wave, the election of an officer of Board of Adjustments liaison to replace our departed-from-the-commission Ginger Duhon. She's just removed herself from the... She has other duties that's come up, and other business and adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I move that the minutes from October 22nd of the planning commission be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Travis, trim, cram. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried to approve the consent agenda. Item two, three, and four, which is the title wave, we will hear all three items together and vote separately. Mr. Jury, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks and Planning Commission. Before you today is the request from the applicant, Thomas Weld, TW Make &amp; L.L.C., on behalf of the property owner, QuickTrip Corporation, requesting approval of a site plan and design review for Title Wave Auto Spa, as well as the preliminary plat and the final plat for TW Blue Springs Car Wash first plat. This is... Property's located at 727 southwest westbound US 40 Highway. It's on the north side of 40 Highway, about 500 feet west of 7 Highway, as you can see on this map here. It's about 2.61 acres, and they are proposing two lots and one tract on the property. The three proposed parcels, I guess, are... have several different zoning districts, as you can see here. There's RC, Regional Commercial, GB, General Business, and a little sliver of LI, Light Industrial, on the north side of the middle tract. Currently, there is the old Ponderosa Steakhouse, vacant restaurant building on one of the properties, and then also the existing retail business that is Clark's Tools. They are proposing to demolish both of those buildings and build a car wash on the farthest east tract, or farthest east property, on the middle property, Lot 2, on the proposed plat. They are not sure yet, but they have shown preliminary renderings previously, I guess, with a oil lube shop there. And then Tract A, the farthest west property, is slated for a detention easement to hold all of the drainage of these two properties to the... on the eastern side of the plat, and also partially holding the access for this property as well. The proposal does include, or is requesting to develop, a 3,425 square foot automatic car wash building and 33 self-service vacuum stalls, all located on the farthest east property, also known as Lot 1. Previously, Planning Commission did go through and approve the conditional use permit, so the land uses in order, as well as City Council approving the rezoning to finalize that to regional commercial for the Lot 1 in question for the site plan and design review. As far as the building layout, I'll go over the site plan and design review first, and then the final plat and preliminary plat second. But as far as the building layout for the proposed building and site plan and design review, it does meet the setback requirements as well as the building height and lot coverage for a padsite building type. So they are within all of the requirements for a padsite building type. There are a couple additional requirements for padsite buildings. One of them is the requirement for transparency along the street frontage. The majority of the building is transparent with all of the glass windows that they are proposing on the east and west facades, but the street facade, street-facing facade is the one that's in question, and they are proposing to provide on the street-facing facade quite a bit of glass surrounding the garage door. So the majority of the available area is glass, and staff believes this meets the intent of the code. Additionally, the parking, another requirement for padsite buildings, is that parking is located behind the front building line, which, as you can see here, all of the parking is provided behind the front building line. For as far as vehicle access, property in question, Lot 1, for the site plan and design review, will provide, has access, shown, will access the property through Tract A slash Lot 2, through a shared access easement on 40 Highway. Cars will come in through the car wash, go through, and exit the same way that they came in, going out through the shared access easement across Tract A and Lot 2. The parking for this area, the only parking requirement is that they do have stacking spaces, and they provided the required stacking spaces on Lot... on the Lot 1 between the entrance and the property line. They are providing additional stacking spaces, which staff does appreciate, but they are more than required, and on a... The busiest time of the year, they probably will use most of those spaces. The self-service stalls, there are three canopies that they're proposing, or two canopies, and three locations that the vacuum stalls will be. And they're provided here, here, and here, for a total of 33 spaces. And they will have two of those. The southern two are covered with vacuums, and then the northern one is not covered, but still provides vacuums. And these self-service vacuums are an accessory use that can also be utilized as parking for the employees. There are no additional parking requirements besides the stacking space for car washes. As far as bicycle parking, they require 3% of the number of employees, which amounts to zero, but they are proposing a bike rack on the south west corner of the property, and that staff does appreciate. Pedestrian access, there is an existing public sidewalk along 40 Highway, and they will be able to access this for pedestrians to access across the site and into their As far as landscaping, staff believes that even though the northern buffer is less wide than required, and the east and west buffers provide less landscape than required, the applicant is requesting approval of an alternative compliance landscape plan, and staff believes this is acceptable since the buffers... Planning Commission is allowed to reduce buffer widths if the total buffer area required is more than 10% of the site, which it is. And also, they are short on the east and west buffers, but staff believes that since they are providing 705 plant units versus the required 597, they're providing well over the required, and staff believes this does meet the intent for Planning Commission to approve an alternative compliance landscape plan. As for screening, there are a few things that have been screened. The vacuum houses, there are three locations where there are vacuum houses holding the actual vacuum units, and they're all screened with an actual building that has exterior split-face block veneer, synthetic stucco veneer, and a pre-finished metal roof similar to the main building. There is a trash enclosure off-site on Lot 2, and it'll be composed of exterior of stucco and masonry veneer with metal gates. And I'll show you pictures of these. Here's one of the vacuum housing on the top portion of the screen, and then the dumpster on the bottom. Additionally, there are the vacuum canopies that they're proposing as well, and these can be seen. The elevation view of these are here on screen. Then, this is what those vacuum canopies will look like, a picture that the applicant provided. The vacuums themselves are actually integrated into the design of the canopies, where you can see some of the hosing comes out of each pole and services each parking or vacuum stall. As far as lighting, there are 13 light poles proposed, and staff reviewed the photometric plan that they provided, and it does meet the outdoor lighting requirements of the As far as the actual building, the applicant provided elevations I showed earlier, as well as these renderings. The exterior of the building is mainly windows, but also a mix of stone veneer, split-face concrete blocks, EFS, and a metal roof. So those pictures provide an idea of what the proposal will include. As far as the preliminary and final plat, the... The lot actually provides enough frontage as required for each of the proposed lots and enough lot area for each of the proposed lots. The minimum lot width is 75, and they provided over that for Lot 1, 2, and Tract A, actually, as well as the minimum lot area as well. A portion, I'll note, a portion of this property will be dedicated as right-of-way to provide a triangle right there to provide better future connection possibly for some street improvements if they are ever warranted by MoDOT. That's right-of-way dedicated on this plat. Prior to occupancy, the access drive must be installed as required by MoDOT, though. Adequate, as far as utilities, adequate public water is available to the subdivision, and then there is a proposed sanitary sewer easement that runs the length of the property and services Lots 1, 2, and potentially Tract A if the developer ever does want to turn that into a lot to develop. The proposed... However, the proposed easement does not align with the existing easement, which is here, which is where QuickTrip placed this by separate document when they developed. So if, before we issue a building permit, we will require that the existing sanitary sewer easement must be relocated as approved by the city engineer, which we accepted by separate documents, so we can amend that document through another document. Also, prior to occupancy, all sanitary sewer improvements must be installed. As far as drainage, there is a... Or there's a proposed drainage easement on Tract A. Takes up the majority of that, and that services both Lots 1 and 2. Lot 1 has a drainage easement running across Lot 2 to provide the allowance for it to drain into Tract A. Prior to the release of the final plat for recording, stormwater report shall be approved by city engineer, which, to my understanding, they have submitted that. We're just needing a little bit of time to review that, which that should be able to happen before City Council. Prior to occupancy, stormwater improvements should be installed as required by city engineer. And as always, prior to building permit issuance, final plat, and required documentation should be recorded at Jackson County and returned to the city of Blue Springs. So with that, staff recommends approval of the site plan and design review with three conditions, and the preliminary and final plat both with four conditions. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, good enough. Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come forward? Do you have anything that you'd like to share?
J. Odell, PHC Rhodes, 7101 College Boulevard. Really, we have no problems with any of the stipulations that have been placed before, like, thanks staff for their help. I know I've only been involved for about three or four months. They've been working with Title Wave for a year and 18 months, so they're excited to get this thing going. And if you guys have any questions for me, I'm here, so...
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Mr. Odell, could you give me an idea of how much traffic you expect through the car wash during the day?
So the typical, what we've been using for these, are about 60 cars at the peak hour. If that's on their bluebird day that they have, typically, that's not as many as they see, but that's what we've been designed for, and they've been working with MoDOT on that for the 18 months, and that's where they got the improvements and all that to make sure that they had adequate stacking and stuff like that for the use.
Okay, second question on the shared egress-ingress with the
QuickTrip
gas station that's to your east. Do you foresee any problems? That's kind of a strangle point for both the car wash and the egress or ingress for the gas station?
That is a part of the traffic study that they put in place with that, and both parties didn't see that as an issue.
All right. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion for the site plan and design review for Title Wave.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I move that site plan and design review, S.P.D.R. 1018-6631, with the three conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Do I hear a second? I'll second. Okay, Commissioner Fairbanks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's been approved, the site plan and design review for the three conditions. I would entertain a motion for the preliminary plat of Title Wave, also with the four conditions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, please.
I move that preliminary plat, P.P. 1018-6632, with the four conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Fairbanks, seconded. Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. That was approval of the preliminary plat for Title Wave with the four conditions. Final plat is also Title Wave with four conditions. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, appeal.
I move that final plat, P.F. 1018-6632, with the four conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Okay, do I hear a second? I'll second. Commissioner Fairbanks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same side. Okay, that motion carried with final plat Title Wave with the four conditions. We will submit our recommendations to the City Council. They will hear that November the 19th at 6:00 PM. Okay? Thank you very much. All right, now we have the election of the officer of the Board of Adjustments liaison from the Commission. I would entertain a motion if anybody would be interested.
What all does it involve?
Okay, someone that's served on it. Mr. Bell? They asked what was involved in the Board of Adjustments liaison.
I believe it's attending the Board of Adjustment meetings.
When they have one.
When they have one, which is about every other month, on average.
Two meetings this year.
They had two meetings this year.
I can do that.
It's on an as-needed basis.
As-needed basis.
To hear variances.
Yeah, you'd like that, wouldn't you, Jackie? All right.
Yeah.
Is there anyone? Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else would be interested?
I'd be interested.
Okay. Lakeisha. All right.
If Lakeisha wants to do it, I'll...
Are you serving on anything right now?
I don't think so.
Well, we need to make sure that everybody gets on something sometime. So... Do you want to forfeit your poo?
Yeah, I'll forfeit.
Okay, if you'd like to do that.
I would.
Okay, so you would like to try that? I appreciate everybody trying something. All right.
Do we need to...
Now, I know. All right, now, if I would hear, I'd entertain a motion for Lakeisha Veal for to be the Board of Adjustments liaison.
So I move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. All those in favor, Lakeisha representing us on the Board of Adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations, you've just built a position. Thank you very much. All right, we have other business. We have our next meeting is November the 26th, Monday, November the 26th. How's that looking?
We do have one item currently scheduled for that evening.
Okay. It's still early, yeah. Any other business? We do have a... We have a... Just to let you know, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board presents the State of Police Department and Public Forum, which will be held here on Tuesday, November the 26th. 27th at 6:30 PM. Please come join the police chief, Bob Munz...
Bob Munz.
Munz, okay. I knew I'd mess that up. For a community discussion on public safety in Blue Springs and the future of the department. That is, again, is Tuesday, November the 27th at 6:30 here at this location. All right. So is there any other business? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
Second?
Yep.
Commissioner Fairbanks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Another gentleman? Nope. He needs adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.